Good evening and welcome to the Northampton County Council Meeting, November 6, 2025. Please rise for the pledge. Mr. Giovanni, will you please lead us?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we please have a moment of silence?
Here.
Not yet, Ron. Thank you. Ms. Chafnisky, will you call the roll? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Krapura?
Here.
Mr. Giovanni?
Here.
Mr. Gofredo?
Here.
Mr. Hackman?
Here.
Ms. Keegan?
Here.
Mr. Kraft?
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
All present, two on the phone, one on Zoom. Thank you. Could I please have approval of the minutes from October 16, 2025, October 22, 2025, and the October 29, 2025 budget meeting?
Motion.
I'll make the motion.
Too late. Would you like to second it, Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. It's gonna be fun. This evening, we have courtesy, we have a lot of fun with our technology here. This evening, we have courtesy of the floor, five minutes maximum, and please state your name and your town of residence when you come forward. First, we have Scott Huff.
Good evening, Council. My name is Scott Huff. I live at 2037 Edge Hill Road in the city of Bethlehem, Northampton County, and I'm also the Vice Chairman of the Northampton County Election Commission. I'm here tonight to speak on a couple of concerns that I have which occurred during the current 2025 municipal election cycle. First, let me start by saying congratulations to those who won seats and thank everyone who has taken the steps to run for public office. We all know this is hard work and often goes thankless when you're part of that process. But I'd like to draw your attention to a couple of issues that occurred this year. In Easton City Council District 2 race, an error by an election office staffer caused as many as 48 improper mail-in ballots to go out to voters. Thankfully, it was caught by the public and brought to the county's attention. A plan was then devised by the county to limit the impact of this mistake by the office. While all this was going on, no one from the administration or the elections office notified the election commission. We were notified by members of the public. When I asked the registrar and the solicitor, Mr. Vargo, why they failed to notify the commission, I did not receive a reply. The question was also asked by another commission member, and she did not receive a reply. It wasn't until I made the effort to come to the courthouse and meet Mr. Vargo that I got some answers. Lack of notification on issues from the administration has been a continuing course of conduct in my four years on the election commission. This also includes the machine issues in 2023 and the legal filing, which occurred in the Nazareth School Board race this year, which I'll also address in a minute. All of these issues are being shared with us by the public and not the administration. After meeting with Mr. Vargo on Thursday, October 30, I told him I would be emailing my fellow commissioners to gauge their interest in a special meeting in order to discuss this issue and its proposed response. I did that with Mr. Vargo, Mr. Camini, and Ms. Hess across copy. All five members of the commission agreed and showed concern to call a special meeting on Monday, November 3 to get clarity and answers to what was happening in the Easton race. We wanted to have answers to give the public as we were being asked. I asked Mr. Vargo to schedule a meeting for Monday morning because we knew that we needed a 24-hour public notice for the Sunshine Act to hold the special meeting. The following day, Friday, in the early afternoon, Mr. Vargo replied that no meeting would be scheduled because he, the staff, and Mr. Camini would be unavailable. Again, all five members of the commission, three Democrats and two Republicans, made themselves available to be briefed on the concerns of candidates and voters and to hear and approve the county's response, and we were denied. This was now the third time in my tenure that the election commission was denied a special meeting to discuss matters of election integrity and process. It happened after the 2023 machine errors and when the administration pushed through the satellite election office. Then on Saturday, November 1, I was notified by two candidates that the county was served with a complaint and that a hearing was held in the Nazareth School Board race. This was said to have happened on October 31. Again, the commission received no notification from the administration of an issue or litigation. I questioned it in an email and got no response. In fact, as of right now, no one from the administration has notified the election commission about this issue. Everything we have heard or seen is from the candidates themselves or from the media. On Monday, November 1, after receiving no information from the administration, Commissioner Julia Geisiger and I met here at the courthouse and asked to view samples of the machine and mail-in ballot that was in question, blank ballots. Mr. Camini refused to allow us to view those ballots while we were in the elections office, ballots that had copies of our signatures attached, as if we had already inspected them and approved them, which we had not. Mr. Camini stated that he works for the county executive and that if he gave us permission, he would then show us. The Pennsylvania Election Code gives the commission the authority, as well as the voting public, to inspect ballots. I knew that, but Ms. Geisiger and I made our way up here to the third floor to Mr. McClure's office to seek permission to do our duty. After speaking with his administrative staff at the front desk, we had a seat, and she went to go speak with Mr. McClure. A few minutes later, Mr. McClure walked out of his office and didn't even acknowledge us or our request. Shortly after the staffer came out and told us there was nothing we could do, that she could do, the ballots were never reviewed, and all of this was in front of a media reporter from the Morning Call. I'm not going to talk about, I'm running out of time, but another concern that I have is the satellite office, which opened in South Bethlehem. Yes, the election commission did approve this in a party-line vote, but not without serious concerns about the legality, the need, or the effect on the election operation. We essentially had no data when this decision was made, and it was based on an issue that occurred in the 2024 presidential election. Again, the administration had conversations with landlords and started the process without direction and without even addressing with the election commission. Further, if it is even legal per the election code, were the proper steps followed to follow the county's own financial rules, something as simple as reviewing and signing a lease for a satellite office? Was the county council left out of that process? Currently, the administration is essentially running for elections. I guess I'm out of time.
Do you have your comments written that you'd like to present to our clerk, and she could get them to the rest of us? Just finish your last thought.
Okay. So, basically, the lack of respect for the election commission has been issue questioned even before my time on the commission. Everything noted here is a sad state of affairs and needs to be addressed. As a county taxpayer, I come here tonight to respect for the request that council reviews the Home Rule Charter and puts together a committee or commission to recommend updates and changes that are needed across the whole document. But as an election commissioner, I would specifically like to see the portion referring to the election commission and its duties and responsibilities updated. It should reference the state code and make it clear as day that the authority of the election commission is to administer, inspect, review, and conduct elections in the county. It needs to further outline the do's and the don'ts of the conduct of commissioners in the political space so as to avoid conflicts of interest if a matter between the commission and a candidate arises. Yes, that should fall under personal responsibility, but it would be helpful for it to be clearly defined. I also believe that the election commission should have a solicitor that is picked by the election commission and not an assistant county solicitor who works for the administration. The appearance of conflict there is quite vivid, particularly when it involves decisions of the authority of the commission and the administration. I have known Mr. Vargo for over 40 years. We were in Boy Scouts and Little League together, and I delivered his grandparents' Globe Times newspaper. I believe him to be honest and knowledgeable. But I also want to make sure that the voting public and the commission's interests come first. Thank you for allowing me to share my information and concerns. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I also invite everyone in the voting public and you to come to the election commission meeting on Tuesday, November 18, at 3 o'clock here in county council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Judy Herb Streith.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address county council with regard to the Dixie Cup Tiff. I think all of you would agree that the Lehigh Valley has come a long way over the last few decades, and with the support of community members, local councils, state and local legislatures, the Lehigh Valley has become one of the most desirable places to live. We all want to be proud of where we live. Bethlehem and Easton, for example, have much to be proud of, especially with their downtown, which draws visitors from all over the country. The Dixie Cup building was once a testament to industrial ingenuity and a place where local residents were proud of where they worked. That pride still exists if you speak with former employees or family members. Seeing the building in disrepair has taken a toll on the residents and passersby's who see it as an eyesore rather than the icon that it once was. The Wilson Area School District is supportive of Skyline's Tiff request because it will mean the building will reclaim its glory. It is truly a magnificent building. Skyline respectfully acknowledges the historical and cultural contribution of the Dixie Cup within the community and will preserve the original Dixie Cup within the planned renovation. Our relationship with Skyline has been one of mutual respect, and I have every confidence that they will be a reliable and trustworthy partner within the Wilson community. Just as other cities and towns in Northampton County have had their projects and enhancements, Wilson respectfully asks that the Northampton County Council do its part in approving the Tiff to give us back the glory of the Dixie Cup. I didn't give my address, did I?
It's okay. You can do it again. Just say your town. That's all right.
It's Williams Township.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next, we have Alicia Austin.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Alicia Austin. I am a Forks Township resident, and I am an employee of a contracted company for Northampton County Early Intervention Services. I attended the council meeting in the end of October when the furlough notice was issued for the Department of Human Services workers, simply to support my colleagues. My coworkers and I report directly to the county's service coordinators, and I was deeply grateful when the notice was rescinded and funding was restored to keep those employees working. However, I'm here tonight because it's critical that the council continue seeking ways to increase the availability of funds and ensure timely payments. During that October meeting, both Mr. Gofredo and Mr. Brown raised thoughtful questions that I felt compelled to answer. At that time, there were concerns about unexpected bills, but the reality is there are already outstanding bills. On September 5, our contracted payments ceased. We received the memo on September 20 stating that we should continue to invoice for our contracted services, but payments would not be processed. As of October 21, I spoke with 10 different contracted agencies. There are 139 therapists in those 10 agencies. We're still providing services. When the notice went out on September 20, we continued to provide our contracted services. In order to make that happen, company owners have taken out loans, stopped taking paychecks themselves, or held their therapist's checks to keep services going to the infants and toddlers of Northampton County. As of October 20, those agencies were owed a total of $230,572. That number has grown by more than $34,000 as of this morning that I was able to speak with since the three weeks have gone by. These companies are paying interest on loans that they shouldn't have needed to take out. The therapists are growing anxious about how long we can keep going, and families are terrified that their children, their babies, are going to lose access to the trusted therapists who have helped them make so much progress. We go into homes, daycares, and community settings to meet children with varying degrees of developmental delays, make them, help them make progress. We provide early interventions to help them reach milestones, build confidence, and thrive. We want to do our jobs, but it costs us. We are spending gas money, putting miles on our cars, and giving countless hours to support families, wondering when our financial walls are going to run dry. I am grateful that our county DHS employees remain secure, but they represent one small link in a much larger chain of people affected by these funding delays. I am asking you respectfully and urgently to continue to seek solutions, explore every possible avenue for revenue, and consider releasing even partial payments before services to children are disrupted. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Gofredo and Mr. Brown, for asking the hard questions and showing us that members of the council are looking for answers. Thank you for protecting the DHS jobs and for your ongoing commitment to our community, but continue to seek solutions before the children and the families of Northampton County bear the cost. Thank you.
Next, we have Grace Heard.
My name is Grace Heard. I am from Wilson Borough. Normally, I would give paper copies of my speech, but my printer ran out of ink as soon as I was about to do that, so I'm doing it on my phone. I do apologize. Good evening. My name is Grace Heard, and I live in Wilson Borough, where I currently serve as an appointed member of Borough Council and will begin representing Wilson Ward 1 as an elected council member in January. I'm speaking tonight as a resident who has spent the past several months talking with neighbors, voters, and local families about what the Dixie Project means, not just for Wilson, but for Northampton County as a whole. At the polls and in conversations across the borough, the Dixie Project came up more than any other topic. What I heard was a shared sense of hope and pride that after decades of stagnation, real progress is finally underway. People can see it, a cleaner, safer property, and a plan that reflects collaboration rather than division. The momentum is real, and residents want to see it continue. The Tiff is not a handout. It's a partnership tool, one that allows all free taxing bodies to share in both the responsibility and the long-term benefit of the redevelopment. The borough, the Wilson Area School District, and Northampton County each stand to gain from turning an underused property into a productive one. The Tiff simply redirects a portion of future tax growth, revenue that doesn't exist yet, towards completing the goal that makes the growth possible. Once the Tiff concludes, all free taxing bodies will collect more revenue than they ever could from an empty site. This isn't a cost to the county. It's an investment in future stability and shared prosperity. I know some have raised concerns about precedent. What message does this send to other municipalities? I would argue it sends a strong and positive one, that when a community does everything right, cleans up a site, secures school district support, follows county guidance, and builds broad consensus, the county will stand with them. That's not preferential treatment. That's consistent, responsible partnership. And this project's benefits extend beyond Wilson's borders. Planned infrastructure improvements, including new bike and pedestrian paths, will directly connect Wilson to Palmer, Easton, Tatumie, Forks, and Bethlehem Township. Those links will strengthen access, mobility, and quality of life across our region. Redevelopment at the Dixie will support local jobs, encourage private reinvestment, and create safer, more cohesive connections among our municipalities. Many of us in Wilson have waited a long time to see this moment. I often think of Jim McGowan, a longtime council member who lived just down my block. He believed deeply in bringing the Dixie back to life and worked for years to see it happen, but he passed away before progress finally began. For residents like him and for everyone who's cared about building this building for decades, this project represents more than redevelopment. It's about honoring persistence, community pride, and the belief that Wilson's best days are still ahead. Tonight's vote is about more than one building. It's about trust. Trust between levels of government and trust from residents who believe that when progress is finally within reach, it will be supported rather than stalled. The Dixie has stood empty for nearly 40 years. For the first time, every local partner is aligned, and the community is united behind a single vision. Let's not lose the momentum we've built together. I urge you to support this Tiff for Wilson, for our neighbors, and for the shared future of Northampton County. Thank you, county council, audience members, and people from home who are listening today.
Next, there's someone named Stephen, and I cannot read the last name. I apologize. Sorry. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Stephen Gruber. I'm a resident of Northampton County. I live in Bethlehem. And I wish you guys in Harrisburg will get a budget. We need it very badly. I'm sick of the fighting and jokes and tearing each other apart. I don't want special services to close and get money from another budget, like infrastructure. Funding is needed. Please save us from the state's budget problems, and don't make it last longer, like into January. Do your job. Please take the loan because we matter and we need your help. I'm sick and tired of it. Do your job, please.
Thank you, sir. Kristen Bertucci.
My name's Kristen Bertucci. I'm a resident of Lehigh County, but I've worked and provided services in Northampton County out of Bethlehem for eight years. I would like to thank the council for the time that you've dedicated last meeting to asking for more specific information about the lack of payment by Northampton County that is impacting my organization and others funded by Northampton County. To my understanding, the furlough was never rescinded. I believe the direct quote was that it was bad government for him to rescind the entire furlough, but that was just based off of what I heard at previous meetings. The list in front of you is one that I've compiled using my own eight years of experience providing services in this community, as well as the feedback from vendors and attendees of the second-largest mental health event of the year that was held the week after last council meeting. I doubt that this is a comprehensive list of all affected vendors and programs, but I believe it will provide insight into the scope of those affected by Northampton County's inability to pay for previously rendered services going on five months now. Even when smaller, partial payments have been received, those funds are spent on the most basic expenses: rent, utilities, and, if possible, paying staff members. But with the ongoing uncertainty regarding the duration of the state budget impasse, we cannot responsibly reopen programs and bring back our county-funded program staff just to lay them off again when these funds are gone. Every day for two months, my organization and those we serve have experienced the prolonged stress from constant uncertainty and instability that has come from the continued impasse, as well as Northampton County's current position on taking the state treasurer's loan. Uncertainty about paychecks, uncertainty about walking into programs you rely on and then being closed the next day, uncertainty about wondering if my staff is even going to be able to come back since it's been so long since they've been, you know, since we were able to keep them on and pay them. Then on November 1, food assistance benefits for the most vulnerable in our community ceased thanks to the federal government. The regular and stable access to meet one's own most fundamental human need is gone. The only consistency has been the complete disregard that we, as taxpaying citizens, are experiencing by every level of government right now. These actions tell us that we don't matter, at least not as much as a bond rating or in comparison to a real estate taxpayer. We are no longer afforded to pursue equality of life because all we can do is survive. It feels like our country, our state, and our county officials have completely forsaken us. Now, I understand we cannot affect the immediate change needed at the federal and state level, although we continue to try, but I came here once again because I believe the county-elected officials in this room can. Thank you so much for your time.
Next is John Burke.
Good evening, county council. I'm John Burke, council president, borough of Wilson. And here we are again. You know, it feels like, you know, Groundhog Day all over again, and just keep talking about the same thing. You know why I'm here is that, about the Tiff. And I just kind of wanted to throw out a different number than any number we've talked about, you know, not millions, not, you know, hundreds. 16,421, okay? I was doing the math earlier, and I was thinking about it. Well, I gotta worry about my 8,200 citizens in my borough, but then there's also West Easton. There's Borough of London and Williams Township. 16,451 people. Out of this whole process, you're talking two-plus years, I've heard two complaints about the project. Everybody in those municipalities either just wants to see something happen, they can carry, don't care either way, or they've been here, they've been at our meetings, they've been at borough events, saying that they just want something to happen. And like I keep saying, 1983, I haven't seen that building anything else but an abandoned building. Now, the borough, school district, we've come up here multiple times and said we support this project with open arms, and now we're just hoping you guys can see how we feel, truly believe what we believe, and vote yes on this Tiff. Thank you.
James Bundo?
James Bundo, Wilson Borough. I've been there 35 years now. And back in the day I bought my house, we always, first thing, my sister was my guidance. She said, "We gotta check the taxes. We gotta, you gotta make sure you can afford the taxes on this house that you're buying." And after 30, I decided, okay, we're gonna go and pay all the taxes upfront, because you had to pay the taxes upfront to begin with. And then I had a mortgage for 30 years. And the funny thing is, the mortgage was so much. By the time the mortgage was over, I was paying more intact local taxes than I was actually paying for the mortgage of the house. So, my house is 120 years old, okay, which makes that a decade older than the Dixie Building. So, the people that lived in these houses helped build the Dixie Buildings, I'm sure. And it just doesn't seem fair to the tax base to have them come in and not paying right upfront and get on a plan, a 20-year plan. We'll figure your taxes out at the end of the 20 years. So, I guess they're gonna find a pot of gold at the end of the rainbow after 20 years? I don't know. Me, I won't be around, because I'll be like 90 years old, so. So, what I'm gonna say is, a lot of the older people in the neighborhood who have paid their taxes in a timely manner and on time, it doesn't seem fair to them to have somebody come in and get a big tax break for 20 years. It's like some kind of contract that has to be signed, and who's gonna figure all this out at the end? At the end of 20 years, let's figure this out, because now you're basing your figures on unknown amounts. You don't know where they're gonna end. You don't know where they're gonna begin, and you don't know the outcome. And the only people that could, this could hurt, is the long-term taxpayer because they did everything they had to do for so many years, and they didn't walk away. They had trouble sometimes. They went through unemployment. They went through illnesses, and they managed to do what they had to do in good faith. I've always loved living in Wilson Borough, and would I love to see the Dixie Building, a new hotel, I guess, but not when you're gonna make great giant concessions to do this. I guess, but not when you're gonna make great giant concessions to do this. As far as I'm concerned, when I bought my house, I didn't buy it right away. I bought it, it was up for a certain price, and I thought, wow, that's too much. And then a couple of years later, I went back and bought the house for a little bit less of a price. So I think that people making the concessions on that building, it's valuable property sitting there. I mean, it's not a waste of property. People making the concessions should be the seller and the buyer. Why should there be a big tax increment on this to do this? It should be the seller and the buyer. That's, and how much are the taxes? How much are you gonna pay? It should be worked out that way. It shouldn't be coming down to a TIF. Seller, buyer, figure it out. And that's just the way I believe in. And I just believe there's a lot of people that worked hard in Wilson Borough, and they didn't get their big break somewhere along the line. And maybe something happened to them somewhere along the line where they couldn't afford it. And I'm just saying, it don't seem fair to the long-range taxpayers. And God bless, I hope they get their building. And that's all I can say.
Thank you, sir. Tina Smith.
Good evening, everybody. I'll keep this brief. Affordable housing, it matters now more than ever. We're facing a nationwide crisis, as you all know. Affordable housing is at the heart of community stability, and in uncertain economic climate that we're in right now, importance cannot be overstated. Our county nonprofits are expressing growing concerns about funding, resources, and the urgent need to provide safe and stable housing for those most in need. This is our chance to make a real difference. It is a rare and remarkable opportunity for our county to be able to receive one point one million dollars in funding dedicated to affordable housing. Please do not take this lightly. Opportunities like this do not come often. It is the only one I've seen in the almost eight years since I've been here. And we may not see another opportunity come to fruition like this anytime soon. So just as a reminder, affordable housing provides vital benefits for our community. Thank you for your consideration.
Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor? Need to come forward and state your name and where you're from.
Gentlemen, my name's Rodney Nace. I live at eight oh seven Bellotta Street in Wilson Borough. I've been a longtime resident there. I was born on South Side in nineteen forty-seven, moved to Wilson Borough in nineteen fifty-six, and still reside there. It's a beautiful community. I don't know what's going on. I have listened to numerous things in regards to the Dixie Building, and I have listened to a gentleman not too long ago that came in and said that he could revitalize that building and make it useful. That's what we need. We're a small community. We are landlocked. We are not even two miles square. We can't bring in any kind of businesses because we're landlocked. We only got a couple of places that we can go. The TIF is what we're looking at right now to try to get this building rolling. The gentleman that has been talking with the council has done a beautiful job, and from what I've been listening to and what I have heard, he can do it. But I don't know why it's being held up, okay? Easton has a big apartment complex going up down there on Larry Holmes Dive. That was from the ground up. The Dixie Cup is an old building. I've been there, like I said, since nineteen fifty-six, and I've seen that building. I've seen it in beautiful condition, and I've seen it in disarray. The gentleman that is in there right now cleaning that place up has done a fabulous job. They've taken out numerous windows around that building. They've cleaned it up immensely around that property. All we're asking is to be able to get this thing on the roll. And right now, plain and blunt, I'm simple. You people are holding this up. You're holding this back. Please, let this borough get this building rolling. We need this thing. We need it for our tax revenues, and we need it for the people of the borough. It's also affordable housing. But we can't do it as long as you keep holding this back. You've been doing it now for two years, and you've never seen me here before. And the borough people, I don't go there that often, but when I do go there, they know what I'm, I shoot, I shoot right from the hip. I'm square. I'm honest with them, and all I'm asking you people is to please consider this, TIF. It's gotta go through. We need it, we need it desperately. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor? Courtesy of the floor is closed, thank you. Thanks. Is Mr. McClure here this evening?
Good evening, Council. Mr. McClure is off campus for a meeting. I do have just a couple of notes regarding the election, if you'd like to hear them, Madam President. So I did just want to reinforce, and I was prepared to share, as the gentleman from the commission had shared, that the Elections Commission will be meeting Tuesday, November eighteenth at three P.M. here in Council Chambers. As was stated previously, this is a public meeting. At that meeting, Mr. Comini, our Register of Elections, will give a report regarding the election that just took place, as is custom. I did wish, just a couple-
Could I stop you for a minute, sir?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Could you just repeat the date for me, please?
Of course. Not a problem. It's gonna be Tuesday, November eighteenth at three P.M. here in Council Chambers.
Thank you, sir.
And to anyone who I'm unfamiliar with, I'm Michael Cologne, the Acting Director of Administration, since Ms. Peter Zach welcomed her, a beautiful baby girl, a couple of weeks ago. So I did also, just want to address some of the things that were brought up, and this will be shared in greater detail by Mr. Comini as he gives his report, and as we move along through the process. But there was a Thursday of last week, the Elections Commission had started circulating emails, to the gentleman's point, about getting together to have a meeting on Monday of this week, which would have been the day before Election Day. They were advised by their solicitor, Mr. Vargo, that he, Mr. Comini, and Ms. Hess were unavailable as they were preparing for Election Day operations, the election being the next day. All of those individuals and election staff were here from prior to seven A.M. till midnight on Election Day. It is a big undertaking and a big operation, as everyone's aware. So they, the Elections Commission had been advised late last week that everyone would be tied up since the election was the next day. I am aware and understand that two members of the commission had come in and requested to see ballots, to which it's my understanding, Mr. Comini referred them to the ballots that were placed online so that they could view them, just as members of the public had available to them to see and inspect what the Elections Office has put on, online. I do recognize that they had come up to Administration that day, as the gentleman had stated. I do just want to correct that when a member of the administrative staff had, excuse herself, she did come into my office to talk to me. I don't believe she spoke to Mr. McClure, and I simply, because I was tied up dealing with something related to the election, had reinforced whatever Mr. Comini had said because I'm not familiar with some of the historical background, and just deferred to the Register of Elections. I do recognize Mr. McClure, I thought he had already been off campus that day. I do believe he left around the time they were up there, so I do recognize potential confusion, but the administrative staff didn't communicate with Mr. McClure. She came to me. I don't know if she thought he was gone already also, but I believe he left, you know, around the time all this was going on up here on the third floor. On Monday afternoon, Mr. Vargo did advise the Elections Commission to reach out to me if they want, as the Acting Director of Administration, should they want to schedule any meetings moving forward. So that has been communicated to all five members of the election, and I welcome them to contact me to try to help coordinate that, pending on everyone's availability. And then, as was referenced, there were, there were two candidates for the Nazareth School Board who asked for the ballot to be corrected as it related to how the ballot had been constructed. The ballot hasn't changed for a handful of years. This went before Judge Dally, who issued a ruling reinforcing the Elections Office's stance that the ballot is correct, as is dictated by them. I'm not gonna quote statute that I'm not familiar with, other than Judge Dally took the position of that a candidate's name should only appear once on the ballot, which was the position that Mr. Vargo argued on behalf of the Elections Commission. And then, as it relates to Easton, there were some issues identified where a candidate came in contact with a voter who had, we recognize, received the wrong ballot. We identified how that happened, when that happened, and identified potentially how that happened, and took action to remedy that where each voter had been contacted via whatever contact information we had, phone, email, or letters were sent to everyone that could have potentially been impacted to make sure that they were notified to check their ballot, or that they could receive a replacement ballot, which would have been canceled out to remedy the situation. Mr. Vargo had emailed the commission last week when the Nazareth School Board members had come forward with a letter requesting for the ballot to be corrected. Their letters, as well as Mr. Vargo's response, were shared with the commission, I believe, the day that that communication happened. And then, when the commission had reached out regarding the Easton issue, Mr. Vargo had given a bulleted summary via email to everybody about the actions that the Elections Office was taking to remedy the situation. So while there, you know, we could always look back and see how things could be done different. I think we were, the Elections Office and everyone involved were trying to address any issues as they came up. I'm not aware of some of the historical events that were addressed in previous elections, so I won't speak to the historical aspect of that, other than Mr. Comini will address in greater detail the events surrounding this election of this week at that commission meeting on the eighteenth.
Do you have information about when the election should be certified, the end date?
So I don't have those dates in front of me, so there's a series of, and forgive me, Madam President, as I don't have the timeline in front of me, but within the next couple of weeks, there's a series of three steps they have to take where commissioners have to sign off on the process. So I believe that it's by-
Well, if they're meeting on the eighteenth, is that the expected date that they-
It is my understanding.
Bird is giving me a cheat sheet behind you. The reason I'm asking is because if I want to ask Mr. Comini to come before council again, if he's gonna be available or not, so that's, so it should be done by the eighteenth?
I believe so, ma'am.
For God willing.
And I will defer to the little birdie that may be gesturing behind me.
Who's on the commission.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Understood. Thank you, everyone.
Any questions for Mr. Cologne? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving into old business, we have a discussion regarding an ordinance entitled, an ordinance by the Northampton County Council, concurring and agreeing with the Borough of Wilson and the Wilson Area School District to participate in and authorizing the creation of a proposed tax increment financing district to be known as the nineteen twenty-one at Dixie Avenue Tax Increment Financing District in accordance with the powers conferred upon municipalities by Act one thirteen of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, as amended. Mr. Warren and Mr. Capora introduced this ordinance at the September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Are there any questions or comments from council at this time?
Madam President, I have some comments.
This is Mr. Warren, sorry.
Can everybody, thank you. I just want to make sure everybody can hear me. Just to reiterate once again something that I've mentioned in the past as we have been dealing with this and considering this now for what seems to be an eternity. I go back to many, many years ago, in the eighties, when my grandfather would talk to me about how he worked at that plant and for decades after serving in the Army in World War II, came back home, came to Easton, lived in the West Ward with my grandmother, my mother, and he went to work there every single day for decades, till it closed down. And as I continue to reflect on that building, and when I drive past it just about every single day, when I take my daughter to her gymnastics training, I think to myself, once this project is completed, it is going to be a standing testament to the, to the historical and cultural contribution that this iconic building has meant to this community, to the Wilson Borough community, and to countless families as well throughout Northampton County, especially in the Eastern area. So I would, I would say to my colleagues on council, let's vote for this TIF. Let's approve it so we can actually say that we were able to do something, something big for Northampton County's residents and for our Northampton County community overall, so that we could say that, you know, we can raise our heads high and say that we were able to actually do a good job and help revitalize this area that has been blighted for so many decades. And at the end of the day, so we can actually say that we embarked on responsible governance. I would urge my colleagues on council to vote for this TIF. I'm looking forward to voting for it, and I appreciate the countless hours of work that the school district, the borough have put into it for so many years. Let's get this done, folks. Let's get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Gafredo.
I appreciate everybody in here from Wilson who wants to see this project get done. I do. And I think it can get done. I think with the two, the borough and the school district supporting it, the two biggest stakeholders in it, I think it will still get done, even if this council doesn't support it. We have a large purview. We have to look at the whole county, and we're in the middle of a budget, a budget that, you know, we're not paying our pensions for our employees this year. Why, I don't know. I disagree with the stance. But I forecast that we're gonna have to increase taxes next year. I won't be a part of it. I won't be here, and I wouldn't support that either. I would try to cut things like this. I, I don't think it's right to give a tax break for a developer. I want to see the Dixie get rehabbed. I think it will get rehabbed, but I will not support cutting taxes for a developer and then increasing the taxes countywide. And that's exactly what I think will happen next year. So I will not support this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Yes, sir.
Madam President.
Just a minute, just a minute, someone before you.
Oh, sorry.
Just a minute, please. Mr. Brown has the floor.
As we've reviewed this over time, over the last several meetings and over the last couple of years, the concerns I raised haven't really shifted for me. Concerns I had with twenty years, we were not approached about this when it was put together. I have concern about the twenty years. I raised, Tina Smith raised the need for affordable housing. I've expressed my concern about the lack of contribution that this TIF will provide towards affordable housing. I think the million dollars is getting off easy for the developer overall. I think that those two issues in particular, I still have concerns about some of the background stuff we addressed before, so I won't be supporting the TIF. I think the TIF should have been reworked in a way to make it more meaningful and acceptable to the county, but that has not happened. I won't go into extensive detail again. We covered that, I think, ad nauseam on that, so I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Was that Mr. Kraft that was trying to speak? Was that Mr. Heckman that was trying to speak?
It was, it was me, Council President. Really quick, I just, you know, before I vote for this, you know, I find it very bizarre that we live in a world where we have corporations, multi-multi-billion and trillion-dollar corporations that are getting tax cuts out the wazoo, yet to give a TIF and a tax increment finance plan that our Commonwealth of Pennsylvania allows us to do, has provided us this tool for community revitalization, that it's a problem. Corporate tax breaks, corporate welfare, I guess it's fine for some, but when it comes to actual community revitalization and a tax increment finance plan and this tool, that there's somehow a problem with it, I just, I just find that very bizarre. Thank you, Madam President.
Is there any other question or comment from council?
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
It's Mr. Heckman. Hello?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to say that my concern from day one has been, I don't, my interpretation of TIF is not a building being fixed up for a private individual. It's a much broader definition, number one. Number two, we suppose a lot, but it's gonna be twenty years until we know if in fact it's worked or not. Number three, this is, reminds me of the eighties when we had trickle-down economics, and I lived through this, and I can tell you that while wages went up a little bit, costs went up a lot because we- went up a lot because we did, Mr. Warren's right, there's been way too many handouts by government. And we heard tonight that Human Services, the primary function of our government is hurting because of partisan politics. It's ridiculous. And we don't really have a plan on how we're going to go forward with that. I hope the next administration isn't faced with this problem, but so be it. And finally, I just have to say that we've been told that we're a minor part of this, that really, the one investor came up and said, the school district and the borough, they're huge. You guys are a little piece. So I think that the developer has the tools he needs, if he's serious, to go forward with this, and I just think that a 20-year tax update that to give, to put money into the fund, which then is pulled out to make the improvement, which ultimately benefit the owner, like, as the man got up and set about his home, the individual homeowner, yes, his property value may go up, it may not. We don't know, I certainly don't know, what will happen 20 years from now. And so I, I just want to say that I wish him luck. I hope it works out. I won't be here, but I cannot support this as it's written. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? The only comment I want to make is, one of the folks that came up here talked about, or alluded to this body dragging its feet and being the reason that this isn't complete. My history and understanding of this project is that somebody else wanted it about, Mr. Heckman, get me, six years ago, was it? That there was another gentleman, not yourself, who was here trying to build a warehouse, and he showed up at my Finance Committee meeting one day. Was it four years ago? Okay. And he said, you're giving me a LERTA. And I said, I am, you're not even on my agenda. And that's where my understanding of this project started. So somebody in a room somewhere, not on this body, which is supposed to be the governing body of Northampton County, started a deal with an independent broker, not Mr. Barti. And so that failed. And then my understanding is that Mr. Barti wanted to do this project, and there was a different incarnation of it presented to us, I believe it was last year. And that was pulled, not by this body, it was, or maybe it was tabled, but it was pulled. We didn't vote on it. So we're here tonight because of all these other circumstances that happened, that the law states that tonight's the night that we're supposed to vote on it, and that we've been waiting for the IDA to get this document to us all year. We have no authority over the IDA. It's just like the Election Commission, they are separate, they are independent. My understanding is that there are people in Wilson thinking that this body held it up. We did not. The IDA canceled several meetings this year before it could be presented. So it's here before us tonight. People have heard, they've had questions, we've heard it from the beginning, heard lots of different things, and the notes that I've taken over time is that I've heard some conflicting information. One is that I need this to get this project done, but then, no, I'm going forward whether I get this or not. I also have always had, when, no disrespect to Ms. Smith, who lives at the forefront of this affordable housing thing, but I think $1.1 million is an insult in terms of a building that's going to house so many people, is going to take rents that's well beyond anything, an affordable or even an accessible person can get. And I believe somebody who deals directly in the field came here years ago and said minimum of $7 million, that would be respectable. And at this time, I concur with my colleague, we are facing a budget crisis in this county, so the thought of giving a tax break to the developer, but not just the developer, my understanding of this document is that the former owner of this building still has a finger in it, has a big finger in it. And that's the person that nobody else who got up here to talk about the glory and what they want for this building has mentioned him at all. And he's the one that's let this building get to this point. And the borough had plenty of opportunity to go after him and file things against him, and they didn't. So no disrespect to you and what you thought you could do, or you didn't, but to put it on this body that we're the bad guys is completely insulting to me. Because I didn't, I didn't not pay my taxes, I didn't let those windows break, and I remember passing that building on my way to the shore every summer with my parents and seeing the glory that you talked about. So if Mr. Barti is good as his word, he will be able to do this with or without counsel, and if there's no other questions or comments, we can take the vote. Mr. Warren?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
No.
Mr. Gafredo?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Fails by a vote of five to four. Is there any other old business to discuss? New business, introduction of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Northampton County Ordinance Number 5262010, also known as the Northampton County Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 54 Fund Balance Policy Ordinance. I need a sponsor. Mr. Brown, co-sponsor?
I'll co-sponsor.
We got one. Thanks, Ron. A public hearing debate, a possible vote will be held at the November 20, 2025 meeting. Next, we have consideration of a resolution to apply and accept funds through the local share account statewide on behalf of Bloom for Women Incorporated. Ms. Keegan, will you please introduce?
Whereas the P.A. Racehorse Development and Gaming Act, Act 2004-71, as amended, provides for the distribution of gaming revenues through the Commonwealth Financing Authority, CFA, to support projects in the public interest within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas Bloom for Women Incorporated and Northampton County Department of Community and Economic Development have prepared all the documentation necessary to submit a request for this funding, naming the county of Northampton as the eligible grantee and pass-through entity. Now therefore be it resolved, the county of Northampton hereby approves submitting a request for the statewide LSA program grant in the amount of $193,789 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority on behalf of Bloom for Women Incorporated to renovate three bathrooms, the kitchen, and the multipurpose room at Jasmine House in Bangor, allowing the home to expand its capacity from six to 10 residents at one time, update essential living spaces, and improve the overall safety and functionality of the residence. Be it further resolved that the Council of Northampton County does hereby designate the county executive to execute all documents and agreements between the county of Northampton and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant, and that the Director of Northampton County, DCED, is designated as the second signatory on all documents and agreements.
Not you.
That's it, yeah.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Sir, excuse me. No discussion, call for the vote. Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft? Oh, Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of eight to zero. Thank you. Next, we have consideration of a resolution to apply and accept funds through the local share account statewide on behalf of HCSC Blood Center, DBA, Miller Keystone Blood Center. Ms. Keegan, will you introduce?
Whereas the P.A. Racehorse Development and Gaming Act, Act 2004-71, as amended, provides for the distribution of gaming revenues through the Commonwealth Financing Authority to support projects in the public interest within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas Miller Keystone Blood Center and the Northampton County of Community and Economic Development have prepared all the documentation necessary to submit a request for this funding, naming the county of Northampton as the eligible grantee and pass-through entity. Now therefore be it resolved, the county of Northampton hereby approves submitting a request for the statewide LSA program grant in the amount of $900,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority on behalf of HCSC Blood Center, DBA, Miller Keystone Blood Center for the purchase of two new vehicles to replace aging blood mobiles in the fleet, a critical investment in Miller Keystone Blood Center's ability to meet growing community needs. Be it further resolved that the Council of Northampton County does hereby designate the county executive to execute all documents and agreements between the county of Northampton and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant, and that the Director of Northampton County, DCED, is designated as the second signatory on all documents and agreements.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call for the vote. Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes. Yes, yes, yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Thank you. Next, we have consideration of a resolution to apply and accept funds through the local share account statewide on behalf of the Nurture Nature Center. Ms. Keegan, will you introduce?
Whereas the P...
You just could do the, now therefore.
Okay, okay, yep. Would love that. Now therefore be it resolved, the county of Northampton hereby approves submitting a request for the statewide LSA program grant in the amount of $515,000, $515,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority on behalf of the Nurture Nature Center for the improvement and greening of the parking lot and outdoor programming area. Be it further resolved that the Council of Northampton County does hereby designate the county executive to execute all documents and agreements between the county of Northampton and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant, and that the Director of Northampton County, DCED, is designated as the second signatory on all documents and agreements.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call for the vote. Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Thank you. Consideration next of a resolution to apply for and accept funds through the local share account statewide, Greysdale. Ms. Keegan, again.
Now therefore be it resolved, the county of Northampton hereby approves submitting a request for a statewide LSA program grant in the amount of $800,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority for the Greysdale Nursing Home Electrical Room Upgrade Project. Be it further resolved that the Council of Northampton County does hereby designate the county executive to execute all documents and agreements between the county of Northampton and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant, and that the Director of DCED is designated as the second signatory on all documents and agreements.
Thank you. Any discussion on this matter? Call for the vote. Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Next, we have consideration of a resolution to implement a public database for blighted properties, and Mr. Warren has asked for this resolution to be withdrawn. Is that correct, sir?
That is correct.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of a contingency fund transfer resolution. I will introduce, now therefore be it resolved, by the Northampton County Council, that the sum of $4,000 shall be transferred from the 2025 contingency account, do I have to say the number? The numbers are, to Northampton County Area Agency on Aging for the designated purpose of the 2025 centarian luncheon. My understanding is this would not occur if we did not pay for it, and so I offered to pay for it. Any discussion? Call for the vote. Yes, sir.
I have.
But I want to ensure that...
Hold it.
Just a minute, Mr. Heckman, sorry.
That even if we do the transfer, that the luncheon actually take place in this calendar year?
My understanding is that it is scheduled for next week or the week after? It's during the, when? November 10.
Where do they have it? How many people are coming? What?
No one from the administration is here to answer those questions. They all apparently left. I'm not sure how many people it was, but I think that was, it's like every centenary and their, one guest or invited, I believe, correct?
Yeah, it's a very nice, it's a very nice event.
I think it's held at Northampton County Country Club.
So it's not on the premises, it's somewhere else?
No, it's Northampton. But, and I'm sorry, she was here earlier, and I did not even think to ask her because we were asking her other questions. Yes, Mr. Heckman?
Two things. One, I think we should get a, I don't know if we have to, sometimes it seems like if we don't get it in writing, we're in trouble, that if in fact it does not occur that the $4,000 is transferred back into the county council contingency fund. And number two, given everything we've said tonight, I think if this had state of affairs, that in the, how tight our county budget is right now and how tight we've gotten it to, that $4,000 in almost half a billion dollar budget is unavailable for a dinner for people who are 100 years old or older. I find that unbelievable. So I'm, that's all I had to say.
We addressed it in the budget hearing, sir, and it was there in the budget hearing, and I don't remember who else was here with me, but I did ask if, and it, but I believe the comment, and you can read the minutes of that budget hearing, was, well, you said you'd pay for it, quote unquote, so. But if you would like to add an amendment saying if it does not occur in this calendar year, you want it transferred back, I don't mind.
No, that's okay. I mean, the new council's going to have to take some accountability, so I'll leave it to them if in fact it doesn't occur, if they want to pursue the matter or not. So I'll, I'll support it as it's written.
I'll support the resolution as written. I think we could always claw it back at the next meeting if it's going to occur in between meetings. We'd always claw it back with another resolution to pull it back, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero. And I would hope that some of you could make yourselves available to attend that. Given the date and time, I can't, but I hope some of you could go and represent. Is there any other new business to discuss?
While we're using contingency fund, I don't know how much we can chip into the amount of money that we owe to these programs that we utilize that we aren't paying, but is there any way we can get an accounting from, from the administration as to what we owe month by month by month so we can see what the outstanding balances are and we can decide what would be helpful and what we can, you know, chip away at with our contingency?
I would also ask that we get any kind of update or clarity from Ms. Wondolowski if there's any reason that they were not paying, because, you know, we only know what we hear, but if there's some reason that they were in any kind of failure of their contract, we should know that. But if they're all in good standing, we should know the exact amounts and how much, or even breakdowns of quarters or what have you, so. But in writing, like, not just stated to us. And if it could be done by like next week so we could review it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
In follow-up to that, I'd like to just ask the solicitor for a comment on what this body can do to compel the administration to borrow the monies necessary to carry these programs forward until, in the year we've talked about, loans, there's short-term, there's various financing methods. The administration is refusing to do that. They still be hanging threat of potential layoffs. My understanding is what was shared, that that has actually not been rescinded, that they're still subject to a seven-day, I think it's the next step, you get a seven-day notice and people are late. But at this point, with the stalemate at the federal government and still at the state level, I think it's absolutely appropriate that the county borrows the money. We have, Mr. McClure likes to stand up here and brag, we have a billion-dollar borrowing capacity. Good for you. Good for you, uh, but as, as been expressed by multiple agencies, you know, we're talking about the women, the children, the families, uh, those that are in need of the services being provided, uh, and it's a few hundred thousand dollars potentially if it, if we had to use that money over an extended period of time. We're talking about short-term incremental financing. Uh, the administration is just showing a complete lack of any consideration, uh, for these people. So I, I know we're limited in what we can do. I absolutely, I'm, I'm going to defer a little bit, I'm going to, I'm going to put Chris on the spot. I know he's going to go, well, you know what you got to do. Uh, but I, I think it's absolutely ridiculous at this point. We're going into mid-November, uh, worst case, you're talking about, you know, maybe another six weeks into January, uh, and I think that would be appropriate.
As I've always said, council is supreme in two areas of county government, legislatively and with the budget. Given those concerns, um, I would suggest that we start working on an ordinance that sets forth the ramifications, or at least the duties to be done. And as you can see from the lawsuit that I filed last week, uh, the administration is charged under the Home Rule Charter of carrying out the ordinance. So I think that if council is serious in that regard, and I suggest that you are, um, and I know that you are, that we construct an ordinance to address those concerns and have it voted on by council.
And I'd like to put a motion forward to have the solicitor, uh, create the ordinance that recommended in order to move that forward. Well, you don't need a motion, do you? Great.
A very strong and grateful request. How's that? Anything else from new business? Any council committee reports?
Uh, we had an economic development committee meeting today where Bloom for Women, Miller Keystone Blood Center, Nature Nurture, and Greysdale gave presentations, and the resolutions were passed during our meeting today.
Thank you. We had a human services committee meeting immediately before this. We had a report from Area Agency on Aging where they discussed the services that they have, where, where they're having some difficulty meeting because of the budget crisis, but also, um, the successes that they've had prior to the, this budget situation and, um, being able to provide good services to the elders of our, uh, county. Uh, we also had an update on Greysdale, which was very positive, um, and new, um, we got an update on the Televera proposal and hiring. We got an update on some of the benchmarks and metrics that they're trying to meet, and we're seeing, uh, progress in each area. Any other committee reports? Any liaison reports? It's interesting, does anybody go to their liaison things? Because nobody ever gives reports. I'm sorry. Like, I'm the only one. You guys are supposed to go, guys. Um, I went to a C cap meeting with Mr. Giovanni last Friday out in Harrisburg. It was Region Six in person, and we met with the executive director and members from other counties. He gave a little bit of update of what's happening in Harrisburg as to his knowledge and how C cap's continuing to try to work with both the House of the Senate. I would say that a lot of what the C cap priorities are and have been are not being recognized. Uh, one of my areas of concern is what may happen with the 911 funding, because if they can't come to some agreements within a certain timeline, this will sunset, is it January? And we will go back to the old rate. So we're still trying to get $2.20, and, and we got the 195, but I think it may go back to 165. So now we're serious, that we're talking about people's lives with all the other stuff, and then people's lives if you don't have that money to fund those systems. Um, he did talk about our upcoming legislative conference, also our, um, fall conference, which will be in a few weeks, that we will be doing a new member orientation in March this time instead of November, so I would invite all the newly-elected council members to attend that. And, um, I'm trying to think, is there anything else I missed? We talked about a lot. We just, he, he's a great guy, Dr. Kyle Kopko. I'm very grateful that we have him, and it looks like he's trying to move things forward on our behalf. Counsel clerks report? Nothing. Oh, wait, when do you want your budget amendments? Are you going to announce it next week? I already told you guys. All right, do you want to say it again out loud for the record? When are they due? Next Friday? Next Friday, budget amendments are due into them, and then we'll review them on the 19th, because we won't have a meeting before that. She doesn't want to say it, but we should know, but we should say it. Mr. Solicitor, do you have a report? Do you have an update for us on the Mandamus action?
Yes, I received an email from President Judge Dalli. It's scheduled now, it was on the 19th. It's for the following Wednesday at 11:00 in Courtroom Number Five. And it's the return of the citation. I suspect that, that that may be the beginning of legal procedures.
Thank you.
They're actually due on the 13th.
What is that?
The 13th.
Thank you. Thank you, Jen. See?